All right, ten o'clock, so we're gonna call the meeting to order.
Roll call, Paul Story.
Here. Item number three will be recognized guest, we'll pass around and sign in seats. Thank you everybody for being here today. Moving on to item number four, it'll be new business. Aaron, do you have any new business for us?
I do, oh, there's a few different things. I have, I actually initiated one of the more exciting things is I initiated the process to get the state and federal government involved in their storm shelter program that they have. They have money in it, they need to get it used up, and basically what it is, they come in, they set up, they talk, we have workshops set up for individuals to come in, we analyze where they live, and this is the, and they will reimburse seventy-five percent, up to two thousand dollars, to have storm shelters put in place for individuals that don't have storm shelters. The only downside is that it has to be in a flood mapped area. Well, our incorporated towns are flood mapped, and so I've initiated that process, we want to have some workshops them coming in, there's gonna be some press releases on it, I'm gonna request it to be put in the paper. That's, I've initiated that process, we're gonna hopefully get it rocking and rolling by September because the deadline is October. As far as the jail goes, on the insurance claim, that I heard back from the structural guys, the structural portion of the claims, we're not gonna get as much help there as what we thought, but they're still working on the electronics, the electronics that were messed up on that, so we're still wait, the jury's still out on that one. And at the previous countywide fire meeting they have every third Thursday, I sat down and had a meeting with them, one of the big concerns that they're having right now is due to the current weather that we're having, which is great for all the cattlemen out there, got all this green grass, but our next wildfire season, we've got a lot of fuel on the ground, and they're gonna be fighting a lot of wildfires, and so we're gonna have to put some mitigation procedures in place to kinda keep the chances of those things going and spreading too bad, and part of that does actually go back on our commissioners, where you guys can, whenever you're mowing the roadways, wait until the growing season is really over and then really expand, because our roadways are natural fire breaks, and if we can expand those just a little bit and get those roadways, all county roads, and I know some of them are rough, and it's up to y'all's discretion, but if we can really go through and brush hole, get those things down, we've got a larger fire break, and we can get that fuel cut down, so that's one of the things that I wanted to bring to y'all's attention. I talked to our state wildfire guys about it as well, they're on board with it, so I don't know if we need to do a PSA to all the farmers and ranchers, but we also need to get you guys on board with some of our mitigation, because we know there's gonna be a bad wildfire season coming up with all this fuel that's out there. FEMA's still working with, obviously, everybody with our recoveries, I know we, I signed our first deal with the water district, they got their emergency funds already getting ready to get them reimbursed for almost seven thousand dollars, so on my end, that's, that's just about, just about it. Obviously, the new Department of Labor rules are gonna go into effect, I'm still waiting on word, I left a voicemail within Friday to get our consultative visit set in place before the September fifteenth deadline. Lot of information there, does anybody have any questions? The most pressing issue for the county, mitigating the fire danger that's going to show up the next fire season, alright, that's a big thing, we wanna be able to do what we can to be sure that these, if they're, we can't say there's not gonna be, there is every year, we need to be sure and mitigate what we can, do what we can to keep those things from spreading. Took the guys up on the third floor, we got that cleaned up and cleaned out, and it's painted and...
It's painted?
Yeah, it's painted, it's, we got that knocked out in two days.
We hadn't got the floor done.
We hadn't got the floor done yet, that's the only thing left, is getting the floor done, but the walls are painted and we got everything cleared out and ready, looks pretty good up there.
We, I called surplus, and I'm gonna call them back, have them personally, we're gonna be knocking city, and also mention the electric officials, they're gonna, some of the possibly have a disposal list next Monday. Like, we all walked the basement, we walked the old jail, and kinda went through everything and things that they can get rid of, and they had a real positive attitude, they're ready to make more room, to get things organized, and once they get, Cubos is already coming to get shredded items, Gail was cleaning out hers, Karen was going off in hers, so we'll be calling them frequently to come get shredded material to do that, so it's had a move, I think they've done real good last week, and we'll hopefully be making some room to get and make a disposal by next week, so.
Any more new business? Tim's in the parking lot.
We can't get our stuff out through that hall, I tried.
Say again, Rod, I can't.
We can't get our stuff out of our storage area.
Is it through that hall up there?
What?
Cause those file cabinets have all been moved into the hall.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so those won't come through there?
Our boxes won't fit through there.
Aaron, we'll try to go up there and see what we can do, unless you hand carry them out?
Well, couldn't you hand carry them past the filing cabinets and put them on the dolly?
You sure can. I got what I got out, but one log wasn't enough for me.
Well, we have, we have help, you know, we have the workforce.
Yeah, you could, you could hand carry them out.
But we have plenty of help.
And I took a dolly up, and once you get past that hall, you can put a thing on the dolly. You can't all just move that one off of the file cabinet, it's pretty tight.
Damn, good, see you now, running new business, and we're gonna let it take over.
It'd be just a minute this morning, I got some, I got some numbers that I wanna go over with you guys. What I did is I ran a report from the sheriff's office side, from January one of sixteen to August twenty-two of sixteen, and then January one of seventeen, August twenty-two of seventeen. So what I've done is I compared fiscal year date to date of sixteen and seventeen, just so you guys know where we are numberwise, and how much more activity the sheriff's office is seeing. First of all, we're gonna start with the jail side of it, and in eight months of sixteen, we booked four hundred and forty-four inmates. In eight months of seventeen, we booked six hundred and four inmates. Six oh four? Six oh four. Four forty-four to six oh four. That's, there was three hundred and sixty-six arrests in those eight months of sixteen, or four hundred and fifty-two arrests in seventeen, so it's almost eighty, there's eighty inmate increase. Now, we go on to total offenses that the sheriff's office has charged, in sixteen was a hundred and thirty-six offenses, in seventeen we've charged five hundred and eighty-seven offenses. The increase is tremendous. Reports that were filed in sixteen from January to August was ninety-eight total reports. Reports that we have filed from January to August in two thousand and seventeen is three hundred and eighty-five reports. Our increase is just, our call volume and our work volume has just tremendously increased, almost four hundred percent. We get to where warrants are generated, and our warrant numbers, on total warrants served was two hundred and forty-six, we've served three hundred and sixty-eight warrants, criminal warrants. Now, when you talk about monetary value of those warrants, it was three million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, twenty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents in sixteen, we're at three, we're at three point nine million and some change in seventeen. Now, that doesn't mean that we've collected that amount of money, that's just the amount of warrant services that has been done. Another number, that, the last number that we wanna go over is affidavits that have been filed. These affidavits are affidavits that have been filed for arrest for the sheriff's office. There was a hundred and one filed in sixteen for the eight-month period, and we're at two ninety-four in August for the seventeen period. So, just so you know, I went, I found this report, and I've been able to generate this report, and we're, we wanted to bring that to you guys to show y'all the numbers and the increase that we've had, which is something that we are proud of, we also wanted the commissioners to show, to see that our, that our numbers with the same number of folks that we've had, our numbers have tripled and sometimes, you know, have quadrupled, just by the amount of volume of work that is going on right now. So, that's our numbers for the sheriff's office side. The jail side is running smoothly, we're in the process of updating all of our policy and procedures, which we'll have at the September meeting for approval. We've been able to establish two policy and procedures from different facilities that are both approved by several national associations that are credited, national jail accreditation standards, so we're fitting those to form to our jail. We'll have those new policies put in place with, hopefully with the board's approval next month, if not the following month. It's a lot of work, and I've been working diligently trying to get those done with Katrina. We've also, there's a standard out there called Pria, and Pria is a, is a sexual assault deal that goes into the jail. We're going to start, once we get our policy and procedures in place, we're gonna start working on getting our jail Pria compliance. The reason that we need to be Pria compliant is, one, we're mandated to be Pria compliant from two thousand and fifteen county facilities, there's only a handful that have done it, but if we're able to get free of compliance, then there's, it opens up the availability for, if we're ever able to hold any federal inmate or Homeland Security detainees, things like that, it opens up that door where the price of an inmate goes from forty dollars a day to seventy, eighty dollars a day to hold those if we're able to get free compliance. Other than that, we don't have any other activity, but I did wanna bring those numbers to you guys and show y'all where we were at the sheriff's office side.
Is there any chance, any figures of what, of that three point nine million?
I can tell you, Randy, last month, our sheriff's service fee was about thirty-six hundred dollars, that's what the sheriff's office received. We're, our, the sheriff's service fee that we get from the court clerk's office is down right now, they say that it, you know, it fluctuates, but we average anywhere from six thousand some months, and now we, the last couple of months, we've averaged three and four thousand dollars. I can tell you that our maintenance and operation is exceeding what our collections are. The way we operate right now is our maintenance and operation is basically done out of sheriff's service side, and our maintenance and operation money is exceeding, and we've actually got some supplies that we need that we haven't been able to order due to the fact that we're trying to, we're trying to maintain that budget, so we're not having to ask for money. But I, but our sheriff's service fees are down compared to where they normally are. We expect to see that continues, continuation of that, and, you know, I hate to harp on it, but it's because of the state question seven eighty, we're seeing a lot more misdemeanor crimes, you know, we're seeing a lot more burglaries that are, I shouldn't say burglaries, thefts, for less than a thousand dollars, so we're spending most of our time working these, these misdemeanor crimes that are important to us and important to a victim, but we're not gonna see a lot of money on the backside such as restitution and different things, because, I mean, what can we do, what can we do with that? We get them put in jail, it's gonna cost us to hold them, but we're gonna, I mean, we have to do it, that's what we're gonna do.
The penalizing though, too, dropped from a felony to a...
To misdemeanor, that's correct.
So, they're more apt to...
Well, I can tell you, folks aren't...
The penalty's not as severe.
I had one deputy this weekend, Deputy Ride arrested seven folks, and five of the seven were for possession charges, so, I mean, it's, it's hard, it's hard to beat that when you're, when your possession arrest and your larceny are going up because folks aren't scared of the penalty that they're facing, I mean, it's what we're seeing. Folks, I interviewed a guy the other day that said, hey, I'll do meth and I'll have it every day, what are you gonna do, you gonna put me in the county jail for a year? I mean, how many times can you do that to him? You know what I mean? We, we cannot financially afford to house eighty inmates for twelve months and pay the bill, and that's what these, that's what these inmates are, that's what these offenders are seeing, so. That's, that's where we are, I appreciate the commissioners listening, and what I'm gonna do is we're gonna start, we'll do the, we'll do the, every Monday, we'll do a little update on the jail and stuff, but what we'll do for the sheriff's office is I think it's very important that you guys and the community knows where we are, so we're gonna start doing monthly reports like this and present them once a month, so you guys know where our, where our monthly average is, not our yearly average, just what we've done throughout the month, so, but I appreciate it, and I don't have anything else. Any questions on, with you guys? Oh, also, I'm sure y'all already discussed it, but we did get the one room cleaned out downstairs last week, and we are working, we're gonna work diligently on, I'm focusing on a couple of different things, we're gonna try to get everything that needs to be destructed out of two buildings, out of the big building outside and the basement, all at the same time, try to make one trip with that, I think it would be, I think we can get that done. Once we get everything that can be destructed and that can be taken and destroyed and get the destruction order done, then what I'll be able to do is I'll be able to consolidate once again and then start working through that stuff, so we are in the process of getting that done, and hopefully, hopefully we'll have that done within the next month, that's my goal, so.
No problem. Thank you.
No problem.
There was no other new business. We're gonna move on to item number five, approach the next, the previous meeting. Item number six is food naked POs. We have one for eighteen hundred dollars to performance food service. That's from the jail. SSF two, we have a thousand dollars to fleet door.
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office. Then we have a thousand dollar PO to bumpers construction. And then we have twelve thousand, two hundred dollars to Stigus Stone. Move to item number seven, discussing to the possible accident, three twenty-four eight thing four for Star Road. Debbie, I believe you'll have that?
Yep. This should wrap up Star Road. As far as everybody being paid, Clark being paid, everybody...
Great.
And it's a bunch of them.
All my motions approved. I have Rosa, five, and Ray, and second.
Martha Berry.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary. Yes. Austin.
Yes.
Yeah, let Sandra.
All breaks out here.
Yeah, and then up there at the top, you're gonna sign that claim off to Kim, that way you don't have to write the check. And that'll be the only claim in there like that, the rest of them will be speak to the signatures now. The rest of them should be for you to get your money back, Clark.
Are you okay?
What's that big old blip doing in the front? Big old whale.
I don't know, it's like... And he was dating.
He's staying.
Just like chicken scratch. Short handed.
They taught shorthand when I was in school.
Really?
Yes, I didn't take it, but, but they did.
That's cool.
And now they don't even teach us that, which is insane. How are they gonna go back and read this whole stuff if they don't even know how to write?
Hopefully it's been transcribed into print.
I don't know, I think that's kind of a bad mistake there. That's a lot of our history that they can't rewrite.
Aaron, would you leave some kind of good copy of this?
Yeah.
And then give this back to Debbie and Karen, I'll make the copy if you don't mind.
I'll make the copy.
Just one copy for Karen and give the original back to Debbie.
Okay.
Karen signed them?
I did.
No, you didn't sign them?
We, 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 aren't you doing the C I?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm here for a while, so.
Well, okay. Thank you, Aaron.
Yep.
Okay, we found our motion and everything on item number eight. We're gonna move to item number nine, discussing to the... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on to it. Discussing to the signing road crossing permits for lane one.
A crossing or a closing?
That there's Clark either.
That is a district one, and it's, the premier for cattle guards, this is what the district attorney said he needed to do, and we've been discussing this for quite some time, very low traffic volume road, and no residences on its side, and there's probably evidence.
Where's it at, Clark?
County line, east of McCarthy, forty-five.
Fifty.
Fifty. Did you want that to maintain good, Ruby?
Yeah, yeah.
Will still maintain around.
Does change the county road, she's permanent, but crossing on the road, side by side.
Which is cattle lands, probably. For mass pay for some weird times.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, discussing to the resignation for Lonnie Davis, Roy Dixon, with Tascal County District Development Authority. So, I guess if you talked to them?
I've talked to both of them, and both of them have signed, they do wanna be taken off the board, so we just have to sign it, and David.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion on item number nine, do we accept their rec, resignation?
I second it.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Sandra Zachary?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, with their resignation, we're down to item number ten, discussing to the appointed committee members to the Tascal County District Development Authority. Do we, how many members did you say we needed?
Nine. We needed, there's nine total and there's three still on the board.
So we need six nominations. Are you ready today to make six nominations?
Uh, Clark had mentioned about Joe Clement. And said he would be, he would like to sit, I had Ask Ray Miller give a call back. And that would be one for me.
You care to do?
Do you agree, Randy?
Yeah.
And Randy.
And then, is Clark gonna be on it? I think he won't be on it.
Oh, do you? I mean, it's a.
I don't care. I will, man.
Sure.
So how many is that? Maybe four? We only had three, so that's seven. We need two more.
And I asked Gary the other day, I called, talked to him and.
And Gary's dad also, who was one of the primary serving on that board, too.
Randy?
That's five.
Well, we had three already on there.
Yeah.
So we need one more person.
Eight, yeah.
If you're gonna have nine. So who are the nine? Like, like we need to put there in minutes.
The, uh, Bill Cox, Chris Caricker and Ralph White are the three that will continue being on it. Joe Clement, Gary Dunn, Randy Harrison, Ray Miller, Martin Ferry.
I think we definitely put a minute, so six people.
We sure want to know. Rocks and eats are on.
So that would, that's six.
That adds all to eight.
Is the third Bill Cox?
Chris Caricker.
They don't need to be on there.
They're, they're the ones that are already on the board.
Yes, absolutely.
Bill Cox, Ralph White and Chris Caricker. And they were on the original.
Just take a minute though, you know, six, there's six new ones that we nominated and that way it'll always be there. All right, we have six nominations for Industrial Development Authority. If there's not any more discussion or any motion on that.
I second it.
Paul Story.
And Sandra Zachary?
Yes.
Austin.
Yes. All right, item number eleven will be discussing approved Haskell County projects on the survey plan.
Now, these are the projects you have coming up for the next five years. Actually six, if you look at this plan, but anyway, you'll see that everything is here on, on the plan that y'all have put on it. And we are running out of money in twenty nineteen. We're in the red. So as of this, this moment, we cannot add any big projects unless it's an emergency like a bridge failing in or something like that.
So I thought was, I thought they said those enemy was good to twenty twenty-one.
Well, see, on the plan, I'm talking just on paper. We're in the negative in nineteen and twenty.
And for people listening to this, that's not a bad thing. Totally. Because it's hard to get the jobs out, it's hard to get through environmental, it's hard to do, go through all these steps.
It's, what it means is if, if they take any more money, we would, y'all would hurt.
They're taking money from the draft later.
Yeah, they're taking money away from future projects, that's what I'm saying.
How much they take last year was?
Fifty million.
How much they taking this year?
Fifty million, but right now we don't know. They may come back and get some more. They still haven't balanced the budget, have they?
And that covers what period of time?
Pardon?
A year.
Just this year?
Fifty million last year and fifty million this year, that's a hundred million.
Yeah, it's a hundred fifty million is what they've taken so far.
Hundred fifty?
Yeah.
But that's statewide in his A C D districts.
Yeah. So like I said, if they take even more money, yeah, it's gonna hurt. We're feeling it. We didn't feel it there for a couple of years because it was fine. Now nineteen and twenty, we're not so fine. So we'll have to be very diligent on the projects that we lay out. Make sure they're projects that we need to spend money on.
It's a, it's putting a damp room things.
Yeah. Yeah.
And like I say, they haven't done the bu, they haven't finished the budget for this year, I think.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think they have either, you know.
So they're still looking for money. They need to get that cigarette thing passed, so.
I'm told if there is, uh, a few discussions going on, but really no, no plan emerging at this point. And if the Supreme Court strikes down board, the revenue pages will get passed and they'll last there through there and then the problem will work.
And so right now with what you're looking at on this paper, Haskell County has approximately twenty-eight million dollars worth of projects. Give me that.
This goes through two thousand twenty-three. So all we can do is program them, get them shovel ready.
That's all we can do.
If a person gets them programmed and shovel ready, it may not fall in this year, but sooner or later, as long as C E D and the survey plant projects are still ongoing, it will get done sooner or later.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I.
And if, if the project is ready and the money's there?
It will be done.
It'll be done. Yeah.
But what I'm saying is we, we need to keep programming projects. It may not happen in your time, it may not happen here, you want it to happen, but it will happen in Haskell County sooner or later. So later's better than never.
Some bridges and roadway funds.
Bridges and roads, I mean. This was set up to build extraordinary bridges that counties could not afford to build. And then it's evolved to roads and bridges. But like I say, who knows what they're gonna take in twenty twenty? Who knows what they're gonna take twenty twenty-one, I mean.
What is allowed us to do these big projects or will be allowed us to do like Tom Hall, Stoller? What's that run you?
Long Valley. And they built others throughout the state of Oklahoma. I mean, they built some big bridges. What was that bridge they built Debbie over?
Ran River.
Ran River?
Over Fort Gibson.
Fort Gi, and then, is that the bridge that the guy from McIntosh County built on? That they asked him to rebuild?
Seagull.
Seagull got it done, did he?
Yes, he did.
I don't know Seagull, but I, I have a lot of respect for him.
Mm-hmm.
It was a big task for him.
It was a big task and he didn't back down.
Nope.
Of course, I can't tell the whole story right here, but, but he didn't back down.
No.
So you gotta respect that.
And he got the job done well.
Yes, he did.
It's a beautiful bridge.
The CRB's a great plan, it's a great situation the counties are under. But it cuts a little bit.
Yeah, we're starting to feel the grudge.
So did you, have you looked at this, Sandra?
I've, I've seen this.
What? Have you, are you happy with what's on here for our county?
I'd like to know.
Second.
Martin Ferry.
Yes.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Okay, this item number twelve will be discussing city signing interlocal agreement with Pittsburgh County District One and what that is, that it joins me on the west end of District Three. County Road forty-two fifty. The people live on the east side of Haskell County and the people live on the west side of Pittsburgh County, so I've talked to Pittsburgh County Commissioner over and he's agreed to pay for half. What we're doing, putting in one of those ha, half pipes, it's got the wing wells welded on it. Costs like seventy-four hundred dollars. He's gonna pay for half of it. And basically that's, that's what we're doing if y'all wanna link that.
What's the county road number?
Forty-two fifty. We go four miles west on, um, West Liberty Road and you turn south and go about a quarter of a mile, drive past Stacy Sheldon's house and you'll run into it.
Is it seventy-four hundred dollars? Is that your half or?
No, that's, that's the total cost. Pittsburgh County will acquire half of that though.
And that's installed already? Are y'all installing?
We will, no, that's just delivered. And then we have to take it off their trailer and install it. But for the situation that that particular branch is in or whatever you wanna call it, it's, it's a cheap fix. Hey, you never done it that way, do you? I don't know.
I do, yeah.
But you know what I'm talking about then?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's got a, I don't know, four or five small tin horns in there now that, uh,
We took them out?
They stop up, oh, you took them out?
Well, we do that, we took out the ones on top and we gotta take out that second layer due to the size it is.
Yeah. There's a lot of range debris filled up with.
But the way this is set up, with the wood, I call it wing wells, which is probably not wing wells, but the way this thing is laid, we can pour cement and it's, it would be a big opening, but then the water can go over the top. But right now the tin horns, you stop up, it, it's a mess where it's at, but.
You gotta float over on the front of it?
We will have when we pour the cement. But it's uncontrollable, I mean, it's. But anyway, this is just to get, now I've talked, we're getting it from Railroad George and their salesman's working with Pittsburgh County, they're doing the same thing they're meeting today. To, fuck, to replace half of it.
What's that pipe or the thing?
It's a twelve footer. Now, if that twelve foot's cut in half, Clark, it's a half pipe cut in half. You've probably seen them at Echo, they haul it up on that big truck, I mean, it's, if you pour the cement, put the top on it, the water can go underneath, if it gets too high, it can just go over the top. But the way it is right now, it's just like Ray said, it's plugging up the tin horns and washing the whole situation out. And it's just a never ending deal. And I do believe this will stop it. But I'll make a motion on item number twelve. So moving on to item number thirteen, we'll be signing appropriations transfers, appropriations to the C D P O. Debbie, thank you.
Hi, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll hit with you, Karen, in a little bit.
Oh, excuse me.
If anybody doesn't know, Debbie's just one hard working woman.
Oh, well, I was gonna turn around and say, thank you, Paul.
She'll make it happen. Thirty, you said eight thirty?
Like thirty, thirty.
Oh, thirty, thirty.
Yeah.
I said that last week because I heard y'all say that.
We'll, we'll get there.
I mentioned that.
We'll get there. Well, I mean, I can't charge them what to do, but our biggest thing is a safety concern. Make sure we have a straight shot to that door and then we're gonna redo that door that's up there, so. That's, I don't know what they're gonna do. Exactly, exactly. We're gonna have to, we're gonna cut, what'll have to happen is most likely is that whole door will have to be framed and everything has to be cut out. And you'll put it over, you can just, it'll be like an emergency exit. It'll, it'll, you don't get you on out, but other than that, it's generally law from the outside. But you can hit it from the inside, the emergency exit out, so. Yeah, exactly.
Makes sense.
That's, that's my plan for it anyway, so. Thank you.
I like it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
He's been really mad or everything.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I've talked about it.
There's lots of potential. We're getting there. We're getting there.
We're just gonna be all contained in our bill.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Convenient, very convenient, yeah, very convenient. Lots of rearranging going on right now.
Can clean the chairs?
Yeah.
I thought you guys might like it. I'm gonna stay here to maneuver the following.
I mean, it's not a big one. It stays low, exactly, and it stays low, so. it stays low, exactly, and it stays low, so... And if I, I buy that, I just put a PSA, um, state, um, state, well, I actually, I mean, the state, um, the state wildfire damage and then the Hassell County fire, so maybe they can come in, release. This is what we're doing, this is what we're pursuing, so we're gonna try to get the local landowners to also, if you can, make the cover of things, let's have your son. That way it's that true, so, so it's, you know, but it's a long trip, it's a year, it's just, I don't know. I've got to take my son to get his initial feeding on his leg. I'm gonna be there at one, so I'm gonna leave here by the way.
Trustees, get a shovel. We turn off the southeast tent, we go into the gym, have them get all that grass out, those sides.
Okay, he's over, I'll sprint there, uh, he's down off, yeah.
Now, you just give a shovel, lay a shovel.
Like everybody, sometimes you bow for everybody, or whatever, like somebody from Kansas buys something. Yeah. It's internet related, but it's, it didn't collect them all.
Okay, yeah, I'll get home with them. Okay, yeah, I'll get home.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Almost in the area to your bar, did you, I want him to look for some of that trash. Dyer, this trash number. Absolute nonsense.
Have they hit your area hard, Paul?
Not real bad, but we had three kids. We can't.
We, we could hit hard there for a while, and it's kinda slow down, but...
Man, knock on. One and two, you hit pretty hard, but three, we've only got one spot down in three that... And that's off of Tucker Knob Road, you know?
Oh, hey, that's that one spot they dump there for years.
I can't think of anywhere else in three, can you?
No, we got them there down to one spot.
They just made it their local dump.
It is, it's been like that for as long as I remember.
Did you guys get any complaints with fluid county on Thursday and Friday? Did y'all, have anybody called y'all about telecom, it's not...
Yeah, we got the rain to do all that.
It wasn't us, it's the National Guard. They're just looking for a little bit of activity. They're using marijuana medication deals. Blue, I'd like to give, how many they give us, ten hours in Hassell County? All kind of near flying.
Y'all find any?
Everything's too green. Man, that's no Joe Evans.
I agree, we're playing too green.
You know, I spotted for eight years and when you have rain like this, it makes it hard.
All you gotta do is look for white PVC pipe coming out of lakes, there for grow boxes.
You don't see that very much.
I have.
Well, but we don't, you don't see that very much.
See, there are grow boxes scattered out through the woods.
But when it's green like that this time of year, it's, it's hard.
I was out there a few years ago, we got to hear his voices. I thought I was leaving the mine, didn't find out it's someone who had a police scan going on in town, they cared for marijuana.
I'm gonna tell you, I ain't joking about seeing pops and PVC pipes coming out of Lake Eufalor. And there are grow boxes scattered everywhere, there's no problem with that.
Say you got good plants up there, maybe you might as well, you can't on that stuff.
That old guy said that and he go, they bought all that up, 'cause that's all the cash pro forgot, and they're letting it go on the road.
Yeah. Except there's one big plant worth about two thousand.
Yeah.
That's a lot of the lube grass to work that country.
Yeah. We'll be getting it, bro.
This one's a nice gray, or a fall, you have to compare it on.
I haven't seen it yet, yeah. They come in there and done some work on it, definitely know about it. They wouldn't have nothing there.
That's the, should be covered on the blade.
They will find something to charge you for. Hey, he knows not to ask me, cause it, but he's already done it for you. Yeah, that is true. They've charged time to hit me for a lot more than that other one, that's why it's going back in November. I don't work on any of these.
So was it like hurricane maintenance kind of stuff?
No, it was some wire stuff, but like I said, it's going back in November, so... I thought we might just hold off instead of getting on that four thousand, fix this over.
Yeah, that's supposed to be the U P A lease, and I'll have to pin money on it.
Oh, they'll hit, they'll try to hit you for money every time, I, when I'm there, I tell them, "No, you're not doing it." All they're looking for is some more jobs.
What, what is that, with the, 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 the services? Unservices?
It's, it's cheaper than what we, we had. No, I mean, this is cheaper than what we had before we got this.
Do you know anything to pay me for?
I agree, we could look at it again. But I'm telling you, it's...
Everybody has a different thing, and it's, it's, it's something you probably need to look at, step back on.
Well, I think it is cheaper, we went over, we went over. Yes, it's, it deals with the, I mean, it's part of that system.
What's the system to cover? All the offices, all the system?
And cover the, the, the DA has files, has their own.
Well, that's totally different.
But all the county offices?
Except for, I don't believe it's attached to jail, though.
No, they don't cover ours in power.
Yes, I believe it's, it got everything.
Yes, they changed that over right in the middle of an election, Paul, and it didn't work. They changed that over right in the middle of an election, to that company. And it didn't work immediately in the middle of an election. It's before and after, but I remember it was on the board.
Your phone, you pay your own phone bill, but they pay for the phone service?
It is.
So what's their monthly service charge?
I got something about that. I thought it was on that text, that's one that I was doing.
They don't call you, say, when they're coming at halftime?
I called them on, on warranty issue. That's what I asked them, work on it, come in here, and he done something else, that's why I didn't ask you to do it.
Monthly six fifty, two forty-six.
As we started searching these wires out, checkers before we started taking them down, in the courthouse before they started painting. There was one running stupid. Too many different phone companies. If we could check them.
We had, we went over to find two tunnels, but say, you're more, you may find something we didn't, so... We can go over again. And it doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt to check it, but we...
Not cut your deal, you know? Except you were twelve.
No, I haven't.
The what?
Make a pass.
They, they cut our home building, I didn't have, we went, like, two thousand minutes, well, yes, it's time.
Sometimes, you know, there's no, there'll be out sometime, but...
Paul, sing your dummies up, Paul. Appreciate y'all. Ray, I'll see you Thursday.
Thursday.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty right here. You coming, Ray? Thursday, eight thirty right here. But we're not setting, we're gonna discuss it.
I'll give it, just give it air, we'll get trustees over. Here we have to, get over your bills. Just let Aaron know, uh, see, no problem.
Right, when you mentioned that about, I'm not asking you to give me a direct answer, I mean, the research, but... If we get the non payable, you said it would go on property tax. I'm not even for sure about that, is that something?
That's the way it works, we're still...
But anyway, when schools writing non payables?
Yeah.
Rick, it goes on the property tax. And we're getting darn close to writing non payables here.
That's what's concerning me about this school bond issue coming up.
Well, it concerns me too. But I'm just, you know, I'm telling, on camera and everybody here, everybody, you, we're not far away from making non payables. And that's great, and I appreciate the whole public being here Thursday, and I know this room is gonna hold so many people. But I think the public needs to be here and be aware of it. I think y'all are video Atlanta's. Because I think the public needs to know what's going on in county, this is a mess. I mean, I'm telling you, I talked to you and Randy about it, we looked at it this morning. There gonna be some tough decisions to be made. When they done, what I call rewiring, 'cause I know it wasn't rewiring, but bear with me, about the end, they had the stuff coming in. We went over this quite often, quite a few times, we made that decision, but I think we're talking, but we need to check this.
Well, I don't know if you done it, I think it's on a five year...
I don't, we got to double check on the length of the contract. It's, it's been a while since we've done that.
Well, it doesn't have to check into it.
I agree a hundred percent. But the first thing you need to check is the contract.
Well, I had checked with Karen at one time, but...
All right, I'm gonna make a motion on item number thirteen.
All stories?
Yes.
Same, same as that? Yeah.
Item number fourteen is to adjourn, made a motion on that.
I make a motion.